Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I thought maybe we could do this on our feet, it'd be so quick, but maybe not. I'd like to acknowledge that the press and public are duly notified, get that out of the way. Now we're at this item on our agenda known as special presentation. Jim Rye has something he wants to share with us. He's got a good book there.
Many of you will remember this article in The Post and Courier. And it's framed, and I'd like to donate it to the city, and the honor that we've done through the many years of service in the committee level. And I'd like it to be hung someplace in the city if they can find a place for it.
Well, thank you.
And I have one short little poem to read to go along with that.
Poem?
Oh, that's so nice.
This is a poem that I received from a high school basketball coach when I was in high school, and it's anonymous. It's called "The Indispensable Man." Sometime when you're feeling important, sometime when your ego's in bloom, sometime when you take it for granted that you're the best qualified in the room, sometime when you feel that your going would leave an unfulfillable hole, just follow this simple instruction and see how it humbles the soul. Take a bucket and fill it with water, put your hand in it up to the wrist, pull it out in this hole, and what remains is the measure of how you'll be missed. You can splash in all you please when you enter and stir the water up galore, but stop and you'll find in a minute that it looks quite the same as before. The moral to this quaint example is to just do your best you can, be proud of yourself, but remember, there's no indispensable man.
Jim, thank you. Do you want to leave that with Marie so she can... No, no.
Put it in the minutes.
How about that?
Okay. I guess we turn it over to Linda.
Yes. So, I told the mayor that we were going to tar and feather him tonight, and he showed up anyway. So, now's the time that we talk about what has happened over the time that he has been serving the city. Mayor Cronin served the city on the Planning Commission, City Council, and as mayor, so three services to the city. He is a data-driven consensus builder. He would never singularly take credit. However, in thinking over your journey, since 2000, there have been some notable things that should be stated. The city's total net assets increased approximately 5.7 million from FY09 to FY17. Total governmental fund balances increased 6.8 million, or 63 percent. During that same time period, the city's debt decreased by $10 million, and important fixed assets were added. I'm just going to name a few. The new bulkhead at the Isle of Palms Marina, the use of a green belt grant to purchase what is now Mayor Carmen R. Bunch Park, and the paving of 18th Avenue associated with that park, the completion of Phase 1 drainage, and the initiation of Phase 2 drainage, which is going on now. There were renovations to City Hall and the Marina Water Sports Dock. There was replacement of the ball field and the soccer field lights at the rec center, the reconfiguration of 41st Avenue and Palm, and the expansion of the city's camera system to include connectivity to the South Carolina 511 traffic cam system. Mayor Cronin worked to change state law, which is what initiated the creation of the golf cart path that connects 20th Avenue to the Island Center. There were improvements to beach access paths, handicap parking, the basketball and tennis courts, the front beach restrooms, and finally, the initiation of the long-awaited-for managed beach parking. Other things that went on that many people were not aware of was that behind the scenes, Mayor Cronin worked tirelessly to make sure the city was getting revenues to which it was entitled, creating Excel spreadsheets, and making his case by meeting with officials of Charleston County and traveling to Columbia to illustrate to the Department of Revenue that changes needed to be made to ensure that collections were returned to their rightful local government. These efforts helped bring about real change to the way the Department of Revenue reports accommodations taxes, which benefits not only the city of Isle of Palms, but also many other local governments in South Carolina. During your tenures, you have weathered many tropical storms, tornadoes, waterspouts, floods, and yes, even snow. The city's Disaster Recovery Reserve Fund increased $555,000, or 31 percent during your time as mayor. And by the way, I'm confident he's going to want me to check all these numbers.
They're about right.
You have responded street-side to comfort residents during threats to their property and losses, and supported the city's team as they did the work they were called to do. You have served as spokesperson for the city during its challenges and successes, perfecting the stand-up interview, and tolerating the spontaneous interruptions in personal schedules to meet the media's press and air times. Going back many years ago, I recall your diligence on the Planning Commission, which is some of what was in the picture that Jim Rye presented today. And that was working on maximum heated square footage, setbacks, and lot coverage. For the presentation of the results of that work to City Council, we worked together to create model homes scaled to demonstrate the changes that were needed to the code. These changes were instrumental in strengthening building requirements to preserve the residential character of the island. Your accomplishments on the Planning Commission, City Council, and as mayor are many, but I believe your largest influence as mayor has been related to the city's greatest asset, its beach. Your advocacy turned a community lacking a local comprehensive beach management plan into one not only with a plan, but also a city who surveys its beach on a regular basis to be positioned to be in the best steward of this asset. You worked for over a two-year period to successfully change state law to create the opportunity for a community to have a beach preservation fee, yielding a new revenue source for the city amounting to $2.8 million thus far, and the opportunity for this same source for other coastal communities. This was done in the face of incredible opposition. You've accomplished all of these things while also keeping active with other organizations. You've attended countless city functions, from dunking booths to ice bucket challenges to award ceremonies. You did this while keeping your finger on the pulse and sometimes serving in a leadership role with the Charleston Area Transportation Committee, the Charleston Visitors Bureau, the Municipal Association of South Carolina, Charleston County, the Charleston Department of Transportation, I mean, the South Carolina Department of Transportation, and the Charleston Area Regional Transit Authority. So, when you work for a person and with a person for 17 years, you spend a lot of time in conversation. When you're traveling to meetings that are a long way away, when you're waiting for events to start, when events are about to wrap up. And during those times, one of the things that we all have learned about Dick Cronin is that he is a great storyteller.
This is not going to be good.
He has a wealth of life experience from his pre-mayoral days, his travels throughout the world, his family, his tennis and golf. He has gained and expanded on those stories during his time in public service with the city of Isle of Palms. Most of these stories involve the unbelievable, the ironic, the magical, and the funny. In fact, you often quip, quote, "You can't script this stuff," end quote. So, in honor of your sharing a city story that you will no doubt recount, we have provided you with a visual aid to tell the tale, which is one that is sure to be with us well into the future.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Thank you, thank you.
You have to open that.
Do I save the wrapping? Absolutely.
We really do like that bow.
That's a great bow.
A genuine artifact, the age is gone, gone with the wind. Picture of the Stone Fleet. As time passes, people won't understand what Stone Fleet means, but we know what this means.
We know.
It has meant to us.
We get the joke.
There's actually a nail on there that they claim came from the fleet. It's actually on the map.
Oh.
Apparently, there are artifacts down there.
This pin was salvaged from the wreck of the Georgiana. Okay.
She said you can't clip it.
Thank you, Brian. I see Stone Fleet will live forever.
And now, what we want to do is we have a very short video that we're going to play. And featured in that video will be Mayor Cronin and some of the outgoing members of City Council. And then, following that, we are going to unveil the portrait so that he can be with us forever. Okay.
Should we turn off the lights?
No, I think you...
We got a plate of the second time when we're having cake.
Okay.
This is funny.
It's fast.
Sweet. Oh, there's a nice one.
I remember that.
Where'd you get that on the pictures?
Turtle's way.
Aw.
The infamous.
And so now, we will unveil your portrait.
Okay. But before you do that, I haven't seen it for many years. I can remember many, you tell my, I tell stories. Many years ago, my assistant came in and said, "Dick, we have to renew your passport." I said, "Yes, okay." And she said, "Why are you telling me this?" I said, "Well, I want you to know that I've filled out the application and I've changed your color of your hair from brown to gray." And I was afraid, I was thinking, I said, "Well, if she did it, if we had to do it again, it would say clear." So, what is this going to show me?
I don't know, we've had possession for a while.
All right.
Oh.
So, now we're going to move forward with conducting the city business. And after we finish what should be a relatively short meeting, then we'll have refreshments, and we will play the video again. So, those of you who could not see it closely, you can gather around and see it over and over. I wanted to put it on a loop, but I'm not quite that tech savvy yet.
We'll get it done. Thank you, I appreciate all your kind words, all the work that went into the video and the last, I can't even remember the number of years we've been working here together.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. All right, let's move on. Have a seat. We can do this expeditiously. Consideration of appointments of standing committees for 2018. Before us, do I have a motion to approve a recommendation for standing committees?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion and seconded.
And I just want to clarify for everyone that the standing committees and the boards and commissions will be votes that are the carryover council, and we have what is here of our council-elect to vote as well. So, Marie's going to have to pay close attention. The outgoing members of council will not vote on these motions.
And this will be redone
In January.
In the first formal meeting in January, so that it's formally cemented or whatever.
Right, this is kind of a ceremonial thing.
Right. So, the motion had to do with the committees' assignments that were distributed to everybody's possession? Any discussion?
Yes, comment, please. First of all, I want to add the thanks to your service. Bravo called me earlier this afternoon, and they wanted to pass along their best wishes for your family-run community.
But before you go on, Shep, that was in the paper.
Yeah.
Did you see that? It's coming out.
Shep's going to be back. Shep is a neighbor of mine, actually. Linda touched on it, but not only is Dick respected in the community and amongst his colleagues and certainly the staff, but he's respected statewide by the Mayor's Association and by the Municipal Association, whose board he's served on. And so, his service goes far beyond this island. And public service is something that you've taken to heart and serious. You're a good example for all of us in your decorum and your approach and your fairness. And I thank you for serving, and I wish you the best of luck. I'd like to recommend, I'd like to suggest two things for the current council's input, and certainly, the newly formed council. But first, I'd like to congratulate those that were elected, the campaigns you ran, and your willingness to serve. You'll come to find out, if you don't already perceive it, that campaigning and governing are very different things. But you've been successful here, and we hope that that success will carry on. We are a council form of government, as you probably know. About a week ago, the Uptown Newsletter, which is the product of the Municipal Association that you've heard referenced several times, came out with a true or false question. And I think it's appropriate, as you consider going into government and a council form of government. It says, "True or false, the council form of government is often called governance by committee because of shared powers. Essentially, the nine of us are one amongst equals." The answer is true. They go on to describe this as, "The council form of government is often called governance by committee because the mayor, council members equally share legislative and administrative authority." So, it's in that regard that I want to suggest that we consider the committees themselves and the roles of the committees. I suspect, like me, you're not familiar with all the committees. We don't know all of your skill set and experiences. I'm not sure that committees that were established years ago still represent things that were discussed in the campaign, most notably, environmental measures. We're on a barrier island, we don't have a committee specifically for the environment or that deals with the environment. Intergovernmental affairs is another area that we're impacted by. You all know and have learned that a large percent of our budget comes from other governmental areas, local, county, state, and federal. Yet, we don't focus specifically on what is the nature of this and how is it going to affect us now and the future. Infrastructure. We have a public works committee, but we don't have committees that deal with IT, our roads, communication. And I think it's a good opportunity, in your quest in the campaigns, and the two gentlemen that aren't here that talked about openness and transparency, that this is a great opportunity to pause and ask ourselves, are these current committees representative of current times? And there are a lot of different ways to change and deal with these things. You know, years ago, there was a fire department and a police department, and I suspect there were committees that represented that. It was merged into now what we know as public safety. So, I think this is a great time, as we go through the transition period in December, council won't be fully constituted until February, to meet, talk with one another, ask ourselves, are these the right committees? Could these committees be adjusted, added to? One simple suggestion or thought is, it could be infrastructure rather than public works, so then we can deal with road issues, technology issues, and other things. The second item I'd like to bring to your attention is the criteria by which we appoint people to these committees and select them. And again, we all have input into this process. And if we know more about all the individuals and the skill sets and the experiences they bring to council, it seems to me we would be better, in a better position to place them in a committee that they have the passion for and they have the experience for. And that drives the added value we can provide to our community. I think the objective is that we do what's best for the community, and we place ourselves in a position that we can best serve the community. I would be interested in any comments, observations by the incoming members, as well as my colleagues on either subject. And I hope this is a discussion that we can have and meet and work through in the incoming weeks.
Well, my only comment is, as I'm not sure everybody's aware, up until a few years ago, we really didn't have a real property committee. And when that was originally formed, it was made up, not using the proper terms here, haphazardly. There were members of council as well as a member, in fact, Jim, I think. A non-elected member from the public served on the real property committee. Obviously, the real property committee and the things that it now embraces became larger and larger and more important to the city, so now it's a very important committee of council. But it may have too much on its plate. When you say environment, I keep thinking of the environment meaning stormwater, beaches, beach access paths, etc. The whole drainage issue, I mean, that could be a separate initiative unto itself.
Absolutely.
Right now, we throw that as a real property matter, which is just an adjunct to some of the other more substantial matters that they have. So, I would encourage you, you know, a deep look at all of the committee activities and whether we have the right numbers.
But as many of the elected, newly elected officials identified, we have significant environmental issues, either that we are impacting upon the environment, or that the environment is impacting upon us. And we talk also about national preparedness. Well, I suspect that in public safety, there's an element of that. Do we give it the right priority? What's the description of the committees? Should we make it more robust? Rising sea levels, we're going to deal with it. We're naive as to think we're not. Sewage issues, we're going to have to deal with it. They're substantial. Costs involve social, cultural issues. And I think this is a great time to honor transparency and openness, and we do it as a collective body, as is our form of government represents.
Okay. All well-stated? Carol has her hand up first.
I was just going to say, I'm hopeful we'll have a visioning workshop again. I thought that was so valuable last year, and I think it would be great to discuss some of these issues and place them, you know, on different committees' plates. I mean, I really think that would be a wonderful place for us all to be able to discuss it.
But if we're going to have the committee's system to be transparent and to add the most value, we have to have those discussions first, and then the people with skill sets, whatever category they are, can come and represent that in a visioning session, as I proposed last year and as we did.
Okay.
I'm going to offer, just to keep this dialogue going and make sure it is, of course, it'll be in the record, my own recommendations for committees. And you know, since I did this, and this is completely open as a straw man, I've since made in my own mind a change in talking to one of the incoming members and learning that they had worked in a particular area that I wasn't familiar with. So, I said, "Well, that person should probably be moved to an appropriate and a different committee." So, this is a straw man by which I am offering, as a member of council, I'll share it with you.
Is this an amendment to the vote? What is this?
So moved.
I mean, I'm not making amendment, the motion.
I am, so moved.
Do we have a motion to amend? Is there a second? No second?
We need some clarity here. I'm not sure that council member Harrington can second that.
Can't, okay.
That's a good point.
He can't. I hear no second?
But are, did I understand correctly that we're voting on this? And who's voting on this?
The council that is carryover and the council-elect.
So, we have four members.
The two council-elect. I thought it was just a receipt.
Receipt of nominations.
It can be either way. If you all only want to receive it as nominations and vote on it in January, it's not required, I don't think that we vote.
The ordinance states it's just simply a receipt.
I agree.
That's all it is.
I agree.
Okay.
And so, in that regard, I'm offering one as well, and I would expect to be accepted. Sterling, do we need to do something more formal than that?
If we're just making nominations, then you make the nomination.
Okay.
And so, it will be included in the record. But again, I want to underscore, the priority here and the intent is that we have openness and transparency, and we conduct this as a group, so everyone has input. And what a great start to begin a new administration. And I thank you all.
Okay. Okay.
I would also like to thank you for your service. And looking at the newly elected out there, you have a great opportunity to serve the city, to serve the residents. You also have a great opportunity to learn. I would recommend two things. Number one, and I know you will, but I'm going to say it anyways, is do your homework before the meetings. Please come in prepared. And I've seen you all, and you do that. The other is, the Municipal Association offers excellent training classes. They're offered a couple of times a year, and they have some off-site meetings. I would recommend that. And I'll go ahead with the third, is get involved with the other local municipalities. There are meetings, there's a deal at the aquarium in January. I've encouraged you to go to that. Meet your counterparts in other cities, because there's a wealth of information there. Some of those people have been there even longer than I have.
Twenty years?
Twenty years, absolutely. But that's my advice. Thanks.
Good advice.
The first thing you realize is that most of them come to the beach here. Oh, we're on the island, we enjoy it, you know. Et cetera, et cetera. Okay.
Okay, so just as a point of order, I believe there was a motion and a second on the table, and so if this is going to...
Withdraw them.
Withdraw it. It's just been a consideration of appointments. So, you have considerations of appointments for standing committees. Now, we'll report on the personnel committees, consideration of appointments for boards and commissions. You have that in your package as well. Is there any discussion on that? All right.
Well, is that also a receipt?
No, that is...
Who votes on this?
It's the, it's the council that is carrying over and the council-elect.
And we didn't vote on the first?
No.
Okay, just receipt because we don't have to vote.
So, do I have a motion to accept the recommendations for boards and commissions?
So moved.
No, you can't.
I can't.
You can't. So moved, so moved.
I'm not paying attention either.
I'll second.
You guys could second or make the motion. That's part of, I don't know, that's part of the activity. All right, we have a recommendation and a motion.
Would you like people to raise their hands, Marie?
Please.
No other discussion?
We have a motion, a second, and a discussion, right?
Discussion.
Okay, good.
Any discussion?
No.
No, not very. All right, all in favor of the slate of boards and commissions, please raise your hand. I was going to say right hand, but, you know, some people go left. All right, all in favor, none opposed? All right, that carries. Consideration appointment of city judge, city attorney and assistant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, discussion?
I just want to say, we're very lucky to have these wonderful people that are willing to serve us year after year.
Well stated. Okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Left hand? No. Motion carries. Thank you.
He continues with his humor.
No, I just, you know, you just can't turn it off.
The Stone Fleet.
Oh, that's, that was... I got to have a gotcha here somewhere along the way. All right, consideration appointment of James Ward to Carter Board of Directors.
So moved.
Motion seconded?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand. Okay. I'm not raising my hand, I'm just showing as an example. Any opposed? All right, Jimmy, you got Carter. Good luck. Consideration appointment of council, member Rice to CDB.
So moved.
Motion seconded? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. What else we got to do?
I do not believe we have anything for executive session or anything for miscellaneous other than to enjoy the refreshments and watch the video again.
All right, thank you all for being here.
Dick, not so fast.
You going to give me one of these or what?
I can give you two of those. I would like to add my thanks for your service to Patrick and Marty and Sandy. Thank you very much. On behalf of the city, thank you.
As we've said before, this is a team effort.
Absolutely. And we all know we come from different perspectives, backgrounds, and have different opinions, which is great. And it's important and it adds to it. And we might all get frustrated with one another from time to time, and it may happen once or twice in the future. But thank you all.
Nothing else to be said?
One quick thing. Mayor Cronin, I want to thank you for the last six years I've served with you. You've brought a lot of humor to different days here and it's been fun. We don't always agree, but we still move on to the next one after that and still come up with another joke on the next one. So thank you for your service and your leadership.
Thank you again. Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we're out of here. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Stay for Kate. That's right, start the video.
Well done, thank you very much.
Dick, thank you so much, Marty, Sandy.
I really liked the portrait.
This guy got so...